All right, we will officially call to order this city council meeting for the workshop at 5:00 PM. At exactly 5:00 PM, we have an executive session on the agenda first, but before we get to that, we have Matt Lawson here tonight with Ryse. He has an item that is on the agenda, agenda item number 11, and he is not able to stay for the meeting at 6:00 PM. So he wanted to just come up and say a few words about the item and introduce himself to those of us who do not know him. So Matt, can you just come up and say a few words for us?
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for allowing me to kind of slide into your agenda real quick. First, I just, I just wanted to introduce myself to, to some of you who may not know me. There's some that I've worked with quite a bit. I look over and Tammy was probably one of the first that I've worked with, starting in probably 2006, I think. So it's been a while. So needless to say, developer of Meridiana, excited to be here, excited of all the efforts on the, the TERS. Appreciate it. And I just kind of want to step back real quick. First, Meridiana, we're really proud of Meridiana. I know a lot of the city folks are really proud of Meridiana too. It's, it's a top 50 master plan in the country. I think it's either number 33 or number 34 as far as master plans go. So the fact that Manville has a, a top 50 ma- master plan in the country is, is something to really be proud about. And I, you know, it, it's taken a lot to get here. I just, you know, want to briefly talk about that and we've had our issues. I've had my issues with the city, the city has had their issues with me. We've, we've had some disagreements along the way, but I really, really appreciate the page that has been turned and how we are working together now. It is, it is really refreshing and there's a lot of good things that are going to come from it. I firmly believe that both two, that will benefit not only Meridiana, but truly benefit the city of Manville and the region. And I think you'll see, you'll see some things come about that are really exciting. So more than anything, wanted to introduce myself to some that I don't know. My, my phone's always on, my door's always open.
All right, council will reconvene from executive session at 6:17 PM. We do not have time to discuss the WRF, so we will head into the regular session here at 6:17 PM. We have five of seven council members present, so we do have a quorum. And then I believe for the invocation tonight, we have Pastor Brandon Kennard with us. Mr. Kennard, if you could please come forward, just kind of share a little bit about who you are for us and lead us in prayer.
Sure, I've been in this area for quite a while and been a part of this community and schools and reaching these students and just kind of being just a part of what Manville's all about. And so it's been exciting, been raising my family, I've had three graduate from Manville High School, still have two left. But excited to see where we're heading with just not only the schools, but the city as itself. So honored and privileged just to come and open it up this meeting through prayer and a blessing. Will you pray with me? Heavenly Father, Lord, we just come before you. And Lord, I just pray that we would just take a moment and just give thanks that we are breathing and that we are alive and that you have given us another day to go about and do things. And hopefully, Lord, that we would be glorifying you in everything that we do and everything we say. Well, I pray for this meeting, Lord, I ask you just give it wisdom and guidance and the people on this council and the people in this room who are going to be talking and seeking out information. Lord, I just pray that you would just be among us and that you would just help us and guide us through this journey. Lord, I pray that this city, the city would be known that we love people, that we show grace, that we are humble, that it is not about us, but it's about this community and that we would bring each other together instead of tearing each other apart. And so, Lord, I just pray that this would be the beginning of something special and, Lord, that this meeting would just be another building block on some great things that this city's going to be doing. Lord, may we always give you honor and glory in everything that we do, Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you for being here. Hoka Hey. All right, we will now have the inspirational reading. Councilman Lance is not here, so I'll step in and fill it for tonight. This is a quote from a gentleman I know named Joseph Matarra. And he once told me, he said, "Dan, activity without clarity will also lead to making poor decisions." I thought that was really good. If you'll please join me in standing saying the pledges. All right, what we're going to do briefly is we are going to move up the public comments section. We have one person that has signed up to speak, and that is Ms. Abby, and she has a game that she has to go to that her dad is picking her up for right now. So Abby, if you could please come forward and just tell us who you are, your name and address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Can you all hear me? Okay. My name is Abby, and I'd like to be addressing the sidewalks here in Manville. Hi. I am in sixth grade, I'm at Manville Junior High, and I have lived here since I was three years old. I'm here today because as a student and a resident, I'm deeply concerned. As you know, there are no sidewalks, and it's very dangerous. Did you know, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, pedestrians are 1.5 times more likely than a passenger vehicle occupants to be killed in a car crash? To be killed in a car crash on each trip. This makes walking next to a highway... Sorry, y'all, I cannot read right now. Okay, there you go. Next to a busy highway without sidewalks, even riskier. Every day, I see students risking their life, dodging cars, going home, and that's not a quick dash. My friends have to walk for 40 minutes on uneven grass to their houses. People have been talking about this for years, but nothing has changed. We can't move forward as a community if we don't take this seriously. We need to rise to the challenge, prioritize student safeties, installing sidewalks along Highway 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. And what grade are you in?
Sixth.
Sixth, and how old are you?
Eleven.
Okay, I don't know many 11-year-olds that would come up here and speak and speak for something that they believe in. So thank you for that, and we'll certainly be discussing sidewalks in the future. Thank you, Abby. We have no more public comments, Tammy? Nope, okay. We will now move on to the presentations, and the first one that we have is the HEB Leadership Recognition. And I believe that we have a representative from HEB here tonight. If you could please come forward, and I know you have a few things, a few exciting things to share with us.
All right, so of course, none of the store leaders could be here tonight. They're all busy getting the store ready, so they send me in their place. My name is Brandon, I am the area community coordinator for the new Manville HEB. I also serve the two Pearland locations. In my role, I do the store donations, so I work with all the nonprofits, the schools. I do the community events, the events that we do in the store, those types of things. So HEB, but they did send me with talking points, so I at least have something. HEB is of course proud to announce the opening of its newest store, HEB Manville, on October 25th. So we're a little over a week away. See, I can actually tell y'all that, I couldn't tell Alvin ISD that the other night, because their meeting was a day too early. And it's the first store just south of Houston to feature the retailer's award-winning True Texas BBQ. Other locations in Houston with this include Kingwood, Conrel, and Magnolia. Area residents will enjoy spacious shopping with the pledge to deliver unsurpassed freshness and quality at affordable prices under the leadership of our top store leader, Malcolm McKenzie. He's a 19-year HEB partner and a longtime Pearland resident. Our other top, our other store leaders are Susan Altic, she will be our center store leader. So if you think about our stores, take the store, divide it in half. Center store is everything that can't really go bad, it's like grocery, drugstore, that kind of stuff. Then we have a perishable leader, his name is Chris Jones, that's going to be seafood market, bakery, deli, floral, those types of things. Texas hospitality and knowledgeable service that's second to none, provided by 500 local HEB partners. Special features of the store include a large assortment of Texas-made products, fully stocked healthy living department with 96 bulk food bins, made-in-store pallet quinchers including fresh squeezed juices, and freshly made guacamole along with pre-cut fruit and vegetable party trays, a fresh seafood market equipped with fresh assortment from around the world, delivered seven days a week, fresh sushi, fried rice and noodle bowls, poke bowls, and hot sushi items made daily in store, fresh meat market offers natural prime and wagyu meat cut in-store daily by certified meat cutters, excuse me, a full-service scratch bakery and tortillera for fresh baked artisan breads and fresh tortillas, yes, made in-store daily. And of course, fresh chips, we also make those. Large variety of desserts, pastries, and custom cakes. As the number one beer and wine retailer in Texas, the store has an extensive craft beer and wine section with almost 1,600 bottles of wine and 800 beer selections from around the world. Friendly pharmacy staff with a convenient drive-through option for all your pharmaceutical needs. And of course, a full-service HEB fuel station and car wash. And of course, this store will also have curbside and delivery. That will be your Manville HEB, opening soon.
Phenomenal, we are all very excited, we appreciate you being here tonight. And life, many times the things that we accomplish is because we are standing on the shoulders of those who came before us, and that's very much the case in this. Many people have come and gone that have been involved in this project, not only from the HEB and Whiteman side, but especially from the city of Manville side, and we thank all of their efforts to get us to this point. We actually have some letters here for the HEB leadership team at the store that I'd like to give to you here that if you could please give them to, and it's a way for us to say welcome to Manville. if you could please give them to, and it's a way for us to say welcome to Manville. So thank you for being here, Brandon. Appreciate it. All right. We will now move on to a proclamation that we have for tonight, which is for the Chamber of Commerce Week, which is October 16th to the 20th. I believe we have representatives from the Bressoria County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Alvin Manville Chamber of Commerce. If you guys would please join me up here, I would love for you to say a few words, and I'll issue you the proclamations, and we'll take a picture together.
Well, Gina and I just want to say thank you, as always, for the city's partnership with us and the business community. Our goal has always just been, how can we better help our business community members achieve their goals, but also give back to the community? And also, our other mission is to help all of our citizens be reminded that every time they spend their dollars at a locally-owned business, that means those dollars stay in Manville and make everybody's lives better. So we're very thankful that you guys have always understood that and have always worked with us, alongside us, and not seen each other as any sort of competitors or combatants, but more as partners of really trying to make this city one of the best places to live in Bressoria County. So thank you guys so much for just giving us the opportunity to be recognized this week.
And thank you for having us. Even though we're chambers, I'm a Hispanic chamber, and the Alvin Manville Chamber is just, you know, a regular chamber. I love the fact that we do work together to serve our communities. So thank you for having us both here today.
Well, thank you guys so much for being here today. What I'd like to do is read off this proclamation that we have, and then we'll have council who's here joining us for a picture as well. I like the leather jacket. Very, very nice. So the proclamation reads, "Whereas more than 600 local chambers of commerce in Texas distinguish themselves as the voice of business in our state, and whereas the work accomplished by those local chambers has benefited our state through their economic development, tourism promotion, and community development programs, and whereas the local chambers of commerce unceasingly promote their community for quality growth and development, and whereas the business community represented through local chambers of commerce has been a driving force in enhancing and promoting the economic environment in which we work and live, and whereas the Chamber of Commerce community in Texas has sought to achieve successful results for our state in a cooperative spirit with other organizations, and whereas the Alvin Manville Area Chamber of Commerce, and also the Bressoria County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we have that one for you back here, has proudly represented the business community in Manville and Bressoria County for nearly a century, and whereas the Alvin Manville Chamber of Commerce, as well as the Bressoria County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, has been a strong partner with the City of Manville in endeavors to promote and develop our local business community, and now therefore I, Dan Davis, by the virtue of authority invested in me as mayor of the City of Manville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of October 16th through the 20th as Chamber of Commerce Week in the City of Manville, Texas." Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The presentations are over. We had moved up public comments, so we will now go to the city manager update. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates tonight. The first one is on the 288 project. Actually, I had a meeting with Harry and Larry this morning, and they asked me to visit with TechDOT if I could get a contact up there. And we actually do. We have an email and phone number and everything for the project engineer for that project. So his name is Albert Martinez. He's with BGE. So he was kind enough to get back with me already, and our main concern was, we just wanted to make sure that where the Toyota dealership and the Del Bello subdivision is, that they will still have access northbound, and they will. They're actually, if you notice today, I think today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, it's down to one lane northbound. So it is tough heading northbound, no question about it. But they're working on a temporary entrance ramp that's going to be just north of Del Bello, so that's what folks will be accessing. But what he did say was the entrance to Del Bello should never be completely blocked. So that's what I wanted to make sure, to make sure that those folks can get out there. So anyway, quick follow-up on that. In that same vicinity, really exciting right now, the elevated storage tank project has gone out for, is being advertised right now. We have a mandatory pre-bid conference coming up week after next. So that's exciting. So we'll see, you know, this money was budgeted several years ago, so we're going to see what inflation has done. Hopefully, hopefully, nothing for Rosie's sake. Yes, she's already praying right now. I can see that. The third one is that we had a successful MEDC meeting last week, and I guess I can, Tammy, it's okay to mention, right? So MEDC is considering helping out with half of the cost for the necessary grease trap right here at Billy Dano's Donuts and Elevate Nutrition and everything. So this was, it's an old, old project. Everyone kind of thought that there was a grease trap there, and as it turns out, there wasn't one. So MEDC has offered to potentially help out with half of it if they can kind of show the numbers as far as employment and everything else goes and help out with the economic development component of that project. So that's pretty exciting. This week, we also have, this week, we've got an SMDA meeting on Wednesday night at 4 o'clock, I believe, right, Tammy? Yep. And so that's moving forward with talking about their first bond issuance on Wednesday night. And then again, just a quick reminder, next Monday night, a joint meeting between council and PD&amp;Z, mainly to talk about the potential changes to the zoning ordinance. This actually goes back to the fence permit request that Commissioner Lance had, or Councilman Lance had. We've got to change the zoning ordinance to get that. And so while we've got the door open, we're going to recommend a few changes to the zoning ordinance. So that's this coming Monday. We haven't set a date, a time for that just yet, have we, Tammy? Probably 6:00, I would guess. But anyway, we'll get back to you more.
Will you have a time?
Okay. What time is it? 6:00? There you go. Good guess. That's all for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate that. We will now move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the consent agenda? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 5-0. We have no items removed from the consent agenda. We do have agenda item number one and number two. What we're going to do is we're going to lump those together. I'll read those both out. And what we're going to be doing is taking an action to table those tonight for the next meeting. We have, in full transparency, we have entered contract negotiations with our interim city manager, Dan Johnson, to be our full-time city manager. Those negotiations are continuing. What we would like to do, and Tammy will circle up with you about this, is we're going to have an executive session on Monday night as we are without two of our council members tonight, and it would be inappropriate for us to make a decision without having them involved in the process. That wouldn't be fair to the community or to Dan as well. So I'll read these out, and then I'll make a motion to table. Consideration and possible action to appoint Daniel Johnson as city manager, approve the agreement of employment, and authorize the mayor to execute said agreement. Consideration and possible action to set the amount of the surety bond for the city manager position as required by Article V, Section 5.02D in the city charter. Any comments or questions by council? Okay, I'll make a motion to table. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 5-0. Agenda item number three, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance 2023-0-39. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a, good news, bad news. The bad news is it's a budget amendment, but the good news is what it's for. This is the realignment of the Clark Road, Clark and Jordan interchange. We've been talking about this one for quite a while. And as it turns out, the bridge itself is part of TechDOT's off-system bridge replacement program. So the bridge itself is a little over $2 million. However, the local match for that component is zero, which is fantastic. A little over an acre of property needed to be acquired, and Meridiana actually donated that to the city, so that didn't cost us anything. So the only thing that we do need to pay for is the cost to re-engineer and the extension of the road to this new alignment. So that is estimated right now from TechDOT at $410,000. It's a little bit less than that, but that's what we're asking for the budget amendment for that amount for right now. It won't all be due. Only a portion of it is due probably this fiscal year. The rest of it won't be due until it actually goes to construction, which is going to be later in 2024, maybe even early 2025. They're doing several bridge projects right now. But this, again, I know $410,000 is a lot, but it's not 2.5 million plus, you know, actually purchasing the property, so. True. Yeah, that's exactly right. Thanks, Bobby. Yeah. So do you want to do that, Mayor? Item number four?
Three and four together?
Yeah, yeah. If we're good to do that, yeah, we can do those together. Dan, can you just speak to what item number four is?
Sure. That's the actual funding agreement that TechDOT sent over to us. It should, let's see, is it in your packet? I know the ordinance is. Let's make sure. Yes. Yeah, that's what TechDOT actually sent over. So it's sort of a form document, several pages. And Bobby had a chance to look at it, although it's a TechDOT form. It's like when you buy a house, the mortgage, you can look at it all you want, but you can't really change anything, so to speak. So, yes, that's just the actual advanced funding agreement that they need. And it does specify those two. At the very end, it'll show you how much is due now. It's a very long document. Apologies.
Harry loved it.
Well, Dan, as you get to that, this is a question that I have. If they don't start construction until 2025, could we, would it be safe to assume that our cost might go up as well, and we might need another budget amendment? Or is it locking it in regardless it's for?
They built in inflation, actually, the way that they do their projects. So that's good. Yes, so the initial payment is 74,000, well, 74,263.94. So we'll just say $75,000, and then the rest of it, the total is 409,489. So that's why we said 410.
Any questions, comments from council? Well, I think in the workshop, we had a representative from Meridiana here, and I think this was a sign to show the strengthened relationship, the rebuilding of that bridge as a way to work together in the future for the benefit, not just of their community, but our city as a whole. So does anybody have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those, and this is for items three and four. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 5-0. Next, we have agenda item number five, consideration and possible action to approve an interlocal agreement between Bressoria County and the City of Manville for assistance with labor and equipment for repairing the following roads. Wilson from Highway 6 to Lewis Lane, Dogwood from McCoy to Masters, Tankersley from McCoy to Masters, Charlotte from McCoy to Masters.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm actually, let Robbie and Tammy tag team on this one.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor. Hey, so Bressoria County, I actually spoke with the guy from Precinct 3 today about the interlocal agreement, and he did let me know that it'd be around summertime before we could actually get the roads did. But I told him that if anything come up any sooner, that we would love to have them move in.
Yes.
So what they're going to be doing is they're going to be reclaiming and actually going to have to go later.
So just to give you all a reminder, you guys actually approved the interlocal agreement with the county back in August. And then the second phase to that is listing out the roads. And so Dan and Robbie put together the listing of roads. That got submitted in. The third phase now is submitting an official letter for those roads that will go to Commissioner's court. With that process, the county does the work and provides the equipment and the staff to do the work. We provide the materials and the fuel and then for reimbursement, as well as the warning and safety signs for that work. So it's kind of a little partnership between the two.
Thank you, Tammy and Robbie. Do I have any questions or comments from city council? Well, Robbie, I appreciate you reaching out and talking to the Precinct 3 gentlemen today. For people that don't know, we are in the jurisdiction alliance technically of Precinct 2, but the service area of Precinct 3 actually covers a lot of Manville. So it's the Precinct 3 road crew that does a lot of work in Manville. And in years past, there have been opportunities to miss, I should say, to make sure that roads get done in a timely manner. And so I appreciate your efforts and reaching out and getting a tentative timeline. And I know the goal of everybody involved is to make sure that we adhere to that timeline. And I know the community will be anxiously awaiting that to occur. Did you say you have something?
Yes, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm super excited to see these streets specifically because they are in definite need of some, what did you call it, reclaiming? However, what update do we have on the other roads? Because I know this is the portion that we've submitted to the county, the two miles, right? This is that part of the two miles. So what about the other roads that are here in proper Manville, right around here?
Yep. So actually, we're working on that exhibit. Yep, we're working on that exhibit to get it up on the website. We've got the list that was approved in the budget as far as the point repairs and all those kind of good things. We're doing the crack seal repairs right now. We just started that last week. If you haven't driven by, they were working on Palmetto. Yep, exactly. Yep. So it's just a necessary, it's something that needs to be done, you know, since the drought conditions. But so anyway, it should be maybe this week, I think.
So you're saying Lewis Lane will be done this week?
No, no, no.
Oh, what did you say? The list?
Just the list, yeah.
The list, so we'll know.
We're doing a graphical representation of the actual roads to get constructed.
And the actual projected completion time and all that of what roads we're working on?
Yeah, a lot of those are weather-dependent, but we can put something on there as far as when they're going to get done, for sure. Yeah, the crack sealing is going to have to happen first before we can overlay any of those roads. Otherwise, you would just be sealing up a bad crack, of course, right? We're also kind of shifting focus a little bit over to Iowa Lane because of this construction that's going on. I believe that's going to start on Thursday, right? Yeah, Thursday.
So Thursday morning, we will start what specifically in Iowa Lane?
So we're going to put some more rock out there, and, but not the loose rock. It's limestone base.
So that when we drive on there, it's not a dust storm, like, okay.
And in the meantime, we're working on some costs to see if we could put a thin overlay on it, just to see what that would cost. It would take a budget amendment as well, but that way you'd be empowered with that information. If that's something that you want to do, because this is kind of an extenuating circumstance with all this work happening on 288 right now. So, and, you know, we've always said, let's hold off on Iowa Lane because that road goes away when Presidio comes. Well, I don't know when Presidio is coming. So we haven't visited them in many, many years. So we may just kind of be backed into a corner. It might just be something that we have to do or at least consider. So we should have a cost for you that very soon.
Thank you.
Great questions, councilwoman. And then Robbie, I believe last week you guys started kind of testing out, you know, a new piece of equipment that you guys have, and that's been going well for you?
Oh, yeah. Real well.
Good. I'm glad. I'm glad to hear that. Do I have any other comments or questions from council? Do I have a motion to approve agenda item number five? We have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. 5-0. We will now move on to agenda item number six, consideration and possible action on the appointments of the Business Advisory Task Force positions 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and two alternates with a term to expire in October 2025. Before I turn this over to Dan and Tammy, just one point of clarification. You might have seen my name in that list. I was testing out the process. I was testing out the process just to see how it worked. And so I am not looking to be appointed to any board, so just a-
You don't want to be an alternate?
No, no, I do not want to be an alternate. I am busy enough as it is. But the process was very smooth, very easy. You could do it from your phone computer, took me less than five minutes, so it's a great, it's a great thing. But turn it over to you.
Yep, I'll let Tammy handle this one.
So this is one of the new advisory task force that you all approved back in July. This is one of, I think there were four other ones, but this is actually one that we actually got enough candidates for to go ahead and get this one going. So we had, and some of the candidates are here this evening. I'm going to tell you who is not here, is Jason Holcher on the list, he was unable to make it this evening, and Jason Black. But I know we have Becky is here, and Richard Drake, are you here? And Richard is here, and then Thag, are you, Thag is here, and Prash? Okay, I know I didn't say the whole name right. So all of their applications were included in your packets. The, everybody, the, on the top of the list, except for Jason, have the qualifications that you guys required within your application process. And then for an alternate, Ramchi was just wanting to be an alternate at this time. And if you have any questions for the applicants that are here, you're welcome.
Thank you, Tammy. I appreciate that. So it looks like we have enough to do the five appointments. Would we be able to place Jason as an alternate?
Yes.
Okay. So then we would have the two alternates there, because we have five that meet the qualifications to actually be the appointed members to the task force. So that works out perfectly, no tough decisions there. Do I have any questions or comments from council?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Sarmiento?
I'm so excited that we had an all-of-a-sudden interest in our Business Advisory Board. I'm very thrilled about that. However, I would really like to look at the applications and, with all due respect, not just approve just because that's the only people we had. Wanting to know what your thoughts are about that.
So it was in the packet?
Yes, but I haven't been able to go through them yet myself, to look at them.
Well, what I'd like to do, Councilwoman Sarmiento, to that, is I know we have some of the applicants here. Would any of the applicants like to come up and introduce themselves and say a few words? Going once, going twice?
It'd be like, I don't-
Come on up, come on up. Well, and you've got a very exciting project here that you've been, you've been working on as well that you can highlight for us. So it's kind of dual presentation right now.
What do you want me to talk about?
Well, let's introduce yourself, why you applied for this, and then if you could just share maybe just a brief minute about your project as well.
My name's Richard Drake. Been a real estate investor since 97. Remember the We Buy Ugly Houses came to town? We were the first one here. Now there's 700 nationwide, so it's a pretty big, it's a franchise. Also on Renters Warehouse, we're a small property management company, about 700, 800 houses we manage all over greater Houston. We own the mansion there on Magnolia Parkway, so we've been building that out as a commercial office building, yay, Alvin Community College. But I've been buying, flipping houses for about, like I said, 25 years, done about 1,700 deals. I've done every kind of transaction you can imagine in the residential side, getting in the commercial now with the project. Just, I've seen a lot of things, messed up a whole lot, made a whole lot of mistakes, lost more money my dad ever made. So I think I can provide some insight to, you know, small business owners when they say, well, what should I do here? Well, don't do that deal, right? Or, this is the greatest thing I've ever seen. Again, I've just, you know, it's just skid marks. I've been run over and done great things and done bad things, not bad things, but made mistakes. And I'm just uniquely positioned to help folks to, I can analyze deals, I can analyze, you know, projects very well. Anybody have questions for me?
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate you sharing, and we're excited for your project. Those two mansions have been sitting there for a while, everybody's wondering what's going to happen with them, and you guys have turned it into a beautiful property, so thank you for that.
Pretty good. I think they're going to scrape the other one. Is that what the plan is?
We'll see, we'll see what they decide. Anybody else that want to say anything? Yes, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone. This is Thag Adikari, and I reside in Manville. Out of so many cities and places, I chose to reside in Manville because Manville City is literally on the rise. I really like the community, I like the people around, and I have very friendly neighbors. So I'm very much happy residing in the city. I'm originally from Nepal, but then I moved to US for better career opportunities, and then I'm primarily into information technology. So I have my experience primarily deals with implementing large IT programs for healthcare industries and even for manufacturing industry. That's where I thought I can make a difference to the community. I can surely work alongside all of you, seek your guidance, and then do my part in making this community even better. So I think that's it for now.
So you'll be able to help us maybe with some of our SaaS solutions and ways that we can improve our processes and procedures?
Definitely. Not only that, I could also be willing to, you know, coach as many young people as we have in the city, young, old, literally everyone who is interested in IT, who can definitely take part into various IT programs and support in various IT projects. So that would be my primary goal.
Thank you so much. Well, welcome to Manville, where we're glad to have you here, and we're excited to see that you applied for this.
Thank you very much.
So thank you. One of the reasons why we initially formed this task force was to make sure that we bring people to the table, that everybody feels like their voice is heard, that their opinion matters. And what we're going to look to do with this task force and the alternates in the near future is to have a sit-down and to kind of talk about some of the goals and initiatives and ways that we can work with the EDC, with the Chamber of Commerce, and our local businesses to improve upon the way that we do things and the ways that we support our local businesses through different ordinances, processes, procedures, making sure that we protect our community, but also prepare for the future as well. So Tammy, from a motion standpoint, how would it be best to structure the motion? Maybe list out the five appointed task force members and the two alternates?
Basically, if you do it in a network, or if you do it each one, the first name of those is position one, position two, position three, and I'll make sure they're in the right positions.
Okay, sounds good. I'll do my best to pronounce some of these names, and my apologies in advance if I mispronounce them. So for the appointed task force members, I would like to make a motion that we appoint Thag Adikari, Prash Matiwalla, Jason Black, Becky Waltley, and Richard Drake. And for the alternates, that we will appoint Venkatar Retanam, Rama Chandran, and then also Jason Holshler. Do I have a second? All right. Councilwoman Sarmiento, seconds. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Congratulations to everyone, and we will be coordinating a workshop session very soon to sit down and talk and start strategizing. We will now move on to agenda item number seven, which is consideration and possible action to appoint Jacob Dubois to the Animal Advisory Board, position number four, with a term to expire March 2024. That be you, Dan, or would that be Tammy? Tammy?
So I thought Captain McLean was still here this evening. So we had a vacancy on the Animal Advisory Board. Their requirements are very specific on who can be on that board. One has to be somebody associated with a, is it a fostering?
Adoption or rescue type facility.
And that's the member that had dropped off, and so Captain McLean was able to get ahold of Jacob, who does fit the qualifications. And so they are needing to have a meeting, and this would fill their last position so they can go ahead and meet and get their quarterly business taken care of.
Thank you, Tammy. Do I have any comments or questions from council? Just a question here about this one, more so about the committee in general. I was made aware of a situation recently where a resident had called about some animals that were on the loose, and they were told that the police could not do anything about it, not because of the police's fault, but because the animal shelter, where we take the animals that we are able to take in, we take them to the animal shelter, and it was at capacity. We do not have, while we might have increased capabilities to take in animals in the future, would this committee be involved in possibly looking at forming an interlocal agreement with Pearland? So that way, if Alvin's at capacity, we have somewhere else to go, maybe look to partner with nonprofits? I'm not sure, you know, kind of what their involvement would be, or what that would look like, Chief, I don't know if you want to-
This committee is specifically designed to regulate the animal shelter we have and nothing further.
Okay.
They are not, they're not designed to go outside and to solicit or anything like that. They're just specifically to oversee the shelter that we currently have in place.
Okay, thank you for that. That's some good context there. Well, this might, that item might be something that we see on a future agenda to talk about how we want to handle that situation, because as we don't really have a true animal shelter right now, but yet we have a very much growing population, you know, what options are there available to us? But appreciate that, Chief, thank you. Any other comments or questions from council? Do I have a motion to appoint Jacob Dubois?
I'll make a motion to appoint. I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, five zero. Agenda item number eight, consideration and possible action to approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-0-37. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the second reading of this ordinance, and ordinarily, you know, a second reading might be in your consent agenda folder instead. But as we discussed last time, we wanted, there were a few things that we talked about at the meeting, and since then, so hopefully in your packet, you saw the updated ordinance, 2023-037. The changes that we're recommending since the first reading are pretty minor, but there are a few, and they're highlighted on the actual document. Hopefully you could see those. One of them, I'll go straight to page three, temporary food establishment. We were recommending that we change that to 10 consecutive days, but as it turns out, we, that's in the TEEFER, right? That's in the TEEFER, the Texas Food Establishment Rules, as 14. So we need to keep that as, actually, we need to change that to 14 days. And we had also recommended changing the verbiage in conjunction with a single event or celebration. Actually, we had that on the first reading, apologies. Page four, we're just literally adding the words and the 2015 Texas Food Establishment Rules, just to make sure, because whenever we, Councilman Lanza isn't here tonight, but you know, we had a lot of discussion on where you can park as far as crushed gravel and pavement and grass and all these other things. As it turns out, that's covered in the TEEFER anyway. So we're going to take the target off of the city's back for a minute, and it's whatever the TEEFER says, that's what they need to abide by. We're working diligently to update from the 2015 to the 2021, is that right, Chief? But we're not quite ready to do that yet, so we could just table this and special events, but I think we've got some good momentum, so I'd recommend that we go ahead and move forward with this, just knowing that we're going to be right back here pretty soon to update to the 2021. So anyway, we're just-
Quick question about that, Dan?
Sure.
May I? So just to make sure I understood you correctly, that this ordinance, so because it references 2015, at a minimum, we could expect when we do everything to 2021, we'll kind of do a big, almost like a packet together?
Right.
And we'll have to update this ordinance to make sure this, at least at a minimum, this portion says 2021?
Yes, sir.
Cool, thank you.
Yes, Chief.
In the 2021 code, everything is accomplished into one code. So when we start looking at the food handlers, food establishments, and the mobile food units, the bed and breakfast, the outfitters, the whole works is established into one code. So when I went back and started looking at this, there are significant changes from the 2015 to the 2021, and that's when me and Dan were talking about it, it's probably best to go ahead and just, with the momentum we have, just make this change, and then we can start looking. It's going to be a process to make the changes on all the codes that we have to make. We just can't make one change in one, because we have, it's going to reflect in the other ones. So go ahead and make the changes we have now, and then we can move forward into the 2021 as soon as we get that ready to go. It's probably going to be into next year before we can get close to that.
I'm sure you've learned more about the TEEFER in recent months than you ever thought you would, huh?
More, yes. It's been an interesting read, let me just say that.
Yes, sir. Well, I appreciate your efforts with it as well.
Moving up to 35317, that was a discussion that we had at the last meeting. I think it might have been Crystal's suggestion that we, you know, expand the hours a little bit instead of the seven to nine, I believe it was, just bumped those from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And number three, that's a new one, I don't believe that we discussed that one last time, but we had some discussion internally. Right now, it says, there shall be no overnight parking or operation, and the thought came, well, what if, what if they're getting set up, you know, early or overnight, they could park it there and getting ready? Or what if it were like a county fairground situation, you know? So we're not going to operate overnight, but parking, that could perhaps be okay. Did I capture that right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
That number eight on 35317, same thing, we're just, we're removing that and referring back to the TEEFER for now. 317-7F, where we talked about the restrooms, that's specified in the TEEFER as well, but we did try and make that more in line with the TEEFER. So what we're proposing now is that all vendors must have access to a toilet facility. Toilet rooms shall be conveniently located and accessible to employees during all hours of operation. Of course, that doesn't mean that these food trucks aren't going to have restrooms on them for the most part, but they need to be within distance of one, they need to have access to one. And then, Chief, you want to talk about the one in 318? That's a good one, that's highlighted there, 318-1A. See the big highlighted area there?
Yes. I'm talking about the approval of the health certificate.
Yes, sir.
Okay, some of the language that we added to this on 1A is approval of the use of the health certificate will be on a case-by-case basis, does not preclude the health officer conducting spot inspections for compliance with the adopted TEEFER Code 2015 and the current ordinances of the city. And the reason why we did that, we were looking at that, is to enable a mobile food unit that is called in. Just to use the example, if someone was having a party, they have a mobile food unit coming out that's already been inspected and permitted to be there, and then all of a sudden something happens, a truck breaks down or something like that happens, then they would be able to call another unit in. And if it's on a weekend, it'd be hard to get an inspection out there and get permitted. So what basically this is allowing it to do is the use of the mobile food unit, if they have a current and valid inspection from a recognized agency or city like Brazoria County, health certificate, fire inspection, to be able to operate on a case-by-case basis. That doesn't mean they can't call, they just can't show if they need lifts, know if they're going to be out there. But one of the things we added to that is it doesn't preclude the health officer or the fire marshal being able to go out and do a spot inspection to make sure they are in compliance with the TEEFER Code. And then if they plan on visiting the City of Manville on more than one occasion and coming in and utilizing their mobile food unit on a more than one-time basis, then they would have to come in and be permitted, a full-time annual permit, because I think they still have to be permitted anyway, for as a temporary food establishment, but that would allow them to come in and be permitted, not allow them, they would have to come in and be permitted, and get the regular inspections through the health and through the fire marshal's office. This is just one of those case-by-case instances where we need the authority to allow somebody to come in and work or have their food truck in an emergency.
And so to sort of add on to that, so the idea is that we'll develop a list so that people know, so that we know, what other cities have the same criteria that we do. We don't have that list yet, and as far as we can tell, no one else is actually doing this just yet. So other fire marshal's offices- So other fire marshal's offices and health officers are very interested to see, does this work or not? You know, because it's, it's a little, you know, they're a little nervous to sort of let go, okay, I'm hoping that their criteria is the same as ours. So it'd have to be at least as stringent. But the tricky part right now is some are in 15, some are in 2021, some are in a flux. So we don't have a list yet for you, Mayor. But that's, we heard you, and that's still the right thing to do, and that's still the right idea.
We're actually working on compiling that list right now. We have a tentative list, but I don't know. We're doing a little bit more research because of a lot of the codes and a lot of cities we looked at, we need to call them because their municipal code basically says, refer the 2021 TEEFER code or the 2021 or 2018 fire code. They don't go into any real deep explanation. So we've actually started a list, but we're not ready to really produce that list because it's about half and half right now. Half the cities are with 21, half the cities are still with 2015, which are probably going to be moving into the 2021 because that was just adopted here recently by the legislature. So we're setting the bar. We're actually being proactive in some areas just to see how this process is going to work. It might work, it might not, we don't know. But we would, we would like to see that, see if that direction is going to take us where we need to go.
That's the summation of the recommended changes from the first reading, Mayor and council.
I appreciate that, Dan and Chief. Do I have any comments or questions from council? Councilwoman Sarmiento?
I love that. Finally, some like meet in the middle, take a risk, see how it goes, lighten the load on our businesses and our community. I just wanted to clarify what I thought I heard. Did we say it would be by the end of next year before we can ramp up and adopt the full 2021 code? Or was it the end of this year?
Into next year.
Into next year.
It might be January, it might be March. It just depends on how long it takes us to dig into it. It might be just something as just as simple as we just put a little blurb out there, we're adopting this code.
Okay.
You know, it's just, we haven't really, we've been working on this. We really haven't stepped into that barrel yet.
Okay.
And sometimes you step in those barrels.
And you're like, oh.
It might happen. So we wanted to work on this one, to try to get this to y'all. And then we're going to start focusing on the 2021 to see what direction we need to go with that.
And if I could add to that, so we had a pretty large amount of time where we didn't have a code enforcement officer on staff. So now we, you know, for time now, we've had two code enforcement officers. And so what the general consensus was that let's not, let's not change too much at one time in the sense that, hey, let's get the businesses up to 2015 before we also then jump to 2021. So it was sort of a stair-step approach. The irony is there are some things in 2021 that have actually relaxed on the code side. So if they're going to be, you know, good to go on 2015. Anyway, we just didn't want to do two things at once, I guess. So I think that was the decision that was made oh, a year and a half or so ago, right, Chief?
There's a lot of things in the 2021 code that are less stringent than the 2015 code.
Which is possibly why there was so much pushback because of the 2015 code, which was strangling a lot. And so we're implementing those, but yet we're trying to adopt 2021, and it's having to do double work and go backwards. And it's like, oh, well, we cited you for this, but if we would have adopted 2021, we wouldn't have had that. Yes? Yay or nay? Trying to understand here and track. I say yes. Okay, thank you. I'm just glad we're getting on 2021.
We will eventually get there, yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other comments or questions from council? So just a few that I have. Dan, I appreciate the update about the list. And I'm glad to hear, Chief, that we already have a tentative one. I think that's going to be something that saves staff time. I think it's going to save the community time. It's going to be a protection for staff as well. Can we also expect that the MFU permit application is going to be updated to reflect this? Or some language to be reflected there? Yeah. Because the last thing I would want is for somebody to go through and say, hey, you know, I paid the 200 bucks, submitted everything. Because it has to be submitted at once. But hey, this was an emergency situation. Didn't have to do it.
Yes, sir.
Great.
In fact, I'm glad you said that, Mayor. Jessica asked me to remind. Do we need some time? I'm sorry. We had talked about, you know, ordinarily, after the second reading of an ordinance, then it's, then it's lost, so to speak, right after. With the, right, with some of the food establishment, then there's an extra 60 days, as we learned, you know, when we were going through it the other day. So right from the state. Yeah. So is that where we're looking at from here? Does 60 days give us enough time to update the application stuff as well?
It has to.
Okay. Well, what I meant was, you know, council could say that this goes into, you know, into effect 60 days or 90 days instead of 60 days or something like that, if we needed more time. But we should be able to update the application and everything, I would think, within the 60 days, so.
Sounds good. All right, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Two more questions that I have. How do we ensure that our mobile food units are properly recording their sales tax within the city of Mamvel? Do we require that they submit a quarterly report of all revenue earned within the city?
Sales tax?
How do we ensure that MFUs properly record their sales tax in reporting it to the city of Mamvel? I know other cities, and just to give some clarity, I researched about 15 other cities, their MFU ordinances, essentially. Some cities require, within the ordinance, the submittal of a quarterly semi-annual, annual report to show the revenue that they've earned within the city to ensure that sales tax is properly recorded. I know of a food truck out of our COLA that would come and do business in the city, but would record their revenue to their base operation in our COLA, and then we would miss out. And I know our local food establishments get frustrated at items like that. So is there any requirement that we have? Or would it be prudent to build in some language into here? I don't know, Rosie, if you have from a finance perspective, but that's something that I discovered over the past two weeks of research.
Okay. That's a great question. We'll have to look into that, Mayor. Honestly, we don't know.
Okay. I don't know if there's anything we want to do tonight or just say, hey, maybe when we come back and update this to 2021, we'll look at something like that, too.
That sounds good.
Okay, perfect. Another question, and that's just a comment. You know, Chief, you mentioned that this case-by-case basis is to be used for an emergency circumstance. Is there anything that limits it to just an emergency circumstance? Because I didn't see that wording within the ordinance.
Well, Jessica just pointed that out to me as well. Emergency was just some language that I used.
Okay.
It's, I wouldn't really consider emergency to be one of those case-by-case bases in the event somebody needs to call another food truck in. I don't think an emergency would constitute that. But it's just one of those things that we had that recently happened in the past month or so ago. And it was the same, it was basically the same issue that they had, they were trying to. It's really not the same thing. We're just trying to look at, trying to be able to allow a food truck to be able to come in in the event that something happened, one backed out, one broke down, and they needed to get another one for their event. That's, emergency was probably not the proper language.
Oh, I appreciate that clarification. I was just, when you had said that, I honed in on that, and I was looking here and just wanted to connect the dots. So I appreciate that, sir. And I guess the comment is also, the final one I have is kind of a comment and question. So my understanding is that this ordinance is tied to a specific event. So if there was an MFU that was rolling around the city playing some music and selling product out of their truck, that technically would not be allowed based off of our current ordinances. Is that correct?
Would you be referring to like an ice cream truck?
Yes, sir. Because the way I understand this as being drafted is this is tied specifically to an event has to be taking place. And that's why it's tied very closely to our events policy. So if there's not an event, then that technically is not something that could take place.
It is. It would be, it would be tied to any special event permitted or not. It would be tied to.
Okay.
We don't just outright allow them everywhere or anywhere kind of in the, in the city.
Please go ahead.
So make sure I'm tracking. So our current ordinance does not allow for an ice cream truck to just drive around and offer ice cream? What town doesn't allow that?
No, ma'am.
Do we know why or where that ordinance came from? Or why? Or is it only allowed if there's a special event?
I think it goes back to when this was originally adopted. And was it 2018 or 2019? The MFU ordinance. And it was, it was a very limited basis on how the city council wanted to see it. The city's grown a lot since then, and people have kind of gotten okay with the idea. You see them other places. So we've been slowly opening that up. I think if it's something that the council wanted to see, where you would have MFUs that be allowed in that manner, ice cream trucks or whatever, this could be an opportunity to capture that.
Okay, so thank you for that. But let me just, just for clarification purposes, is an ice cream truck that gets a permit here allowed to drive around and sell their ice cream if they don't have music on? Or is it?
I don't think the music is a factor.
It's just they cannot actively drive around and sell ice cream with or without music. They just can't.
So ice cream, or if it was like a taco truck that we maybe talked about, it's the same, same difference, yes.
Okay, so basically, ice cream trucks got outed, scrapped from being able to do that at the same time that taco trucks and food, mobile food units were.
Yeah, any type of moving, actual MFU, like constantly moving sort of thing.
Wow. Like again, it was. I'm glad you're saying this is a great opportunity to.
It was real small how they permitted it back then. I guess maybe not necessarily knowing what the appetite was going to be. We're a bit bigger, you know, probably in the last five years. So it's not come up as a topic of conversation before. But I'm sure I can speak for the rest of staff that it's something that if the council wants to see, that it's something that we can, we can work with, putting it on there if you'd like to have that.
Thank you for that.
And that's what I was going to tie to my comment was, and Chief, yes, sir, is I think that there's, when we go to look to update to 2021, finding ways to capture the sales tax because that sales tax was a prelude into this question as well. Because if council has a desire to open things up a little bit more to accommodate some items, you know, those trucks kind of just come in and out. So ensuring that that sales tax gets recorded here as well because they would ultimately, you know, maybe be producing more business, but taking away business potentially from, from different establishments, whether it's a taco truck, ice cream truck, another type of truck. But I would like to see us at least have the conversation. I think it's a worthy conversation to have in the, in the future when we look to update to 2021, which is kind of what I was going towards there. You picked, you picked up, you picked up on it as well. But Chief, please, go ahead.
I was, well, I was just going to make the comment that, you know, that, I don't even know why I didn't even think of that. I was just thinking it's commonplace to see an ice cream truck drive around now. You know, I mean, it's just one of those things that I've just, I'm not thinking ice cream trucks when I'm doing this. If, if, I'm sorry, I just, that's just the way it is, you know? But if we want to put it in language, that would be a very simple thing to do. I could just do a little bit of research. We can add it to this. We can make that happen right now. It'd be just a simple thing to do. Like I said, it doesn't really go into effect for 60 days after, after it's approved. And I don't know if this is really the way to do it or not, but it can be approved on a contingency that I put that in there. With, you know, to approve that language. Or we can just table it again and, or take no action, and I can bring it back at the next meeting. But honestly, I just, when I'm looking at this, an ice cream truck never even came across my mind because I thought that was commonplace. So if y'all would like to do that, I would be more happy to put it in the language and make it happen.
Sure thing. You know, Dan, Bobby, I know that you guys and Jessica, I know you guys have kind of been talking over there. Do you have any thoughts or comments based off of what we've pleasantly uncovered here tonight?
I think it was in our code. We had a separation between mobile food units, mobile and mobile food units stationary. And there was a split in the definition, whether it was moving or whether it was stationary. And the ordinance used to have it where stationary food trucks were allowed at city events, city-approved response events and private events. And the mobile ones were allowed for prepackaged, non-TCS food vendors and ice cream trucks. They couldn't stand for more than 15 minutes at a time. And so anyway, so we did have a split, and they were allowed. And I think when the changes and stuff happened, maybe combined with the special events ordinance, it somehow morphed into what it is now. So I don't think that's been the topic of conversation. It's all been about regulation of the stationary food truck and the special events. And I think that may have been something that clarity got lost in.
Could we on 35314? Let me back up. So on the definition of a mobile food unit right now, it says literally, "Example, ice cream truck." It literally says that in the definition. So could, isn't that funny? So how about if 35314A, we could add a number? So these are an exception for temporary operation for the following: city events, city-approved special events, private events, type C recurring special events, Alvin ISD events, church-related events. How about number seven, ice cream trucks?
Okay. So what I'll do is I will make a motion to amend the ordinance, section 35-314, to include item seven, ice cream trucks. Do I have a second for the amended motion?
I will second that.
Okay, all those in favor of the amendment? All those opposed? Amendment passes 5-0. In regards to the ordinance as a whole, I, I think still the conversation, you know, we'll look to have it happen whenever we explore updating to 2021 about, you know, what, if we want to open it up more, what would that look like? But as the ordinance sits today, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve? All right, we have a motion from Councilwoman Sarmiento, a second from Councilman Perry. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Great work, everyone. That was great collaboration. Let's go home now. All right, agenda item number nine, consideration and possible action to approve the second and final reading of ordinance 2023-0-38.
Thank you, Mayor. So, no, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure. So similar to the last ordinance that we just discussed, this is for second reading, which ordinarily would be in your consent packet, but instead, we're going to, we left it on the regular agenda per council's request. Jessica, you want to talk about this one, the special events?
Okay, to catch you guys, to catch y'all up to speed from the first reading of the ordinance, I realized y'all did not have the ordinance that showed the changes to it, so I'll go back through those again for you. Since that time, we've got the, a definition for restaurant, a definition for First Amendment, a definition for city, and a definition for parade. That's found in section 35-339. Throughout the ordinance, you'll see changes in nomenclature. So instead of saying type A special event, special, it says type A special event rather than special event type A. So we did some consistency checks in there, that everything is sort of being called the same thing, whether it's a A, B, or type C recurring event. And section, sorry, same section in the special event definition, on three type C recurring event, it's been struck from it as far as seeing current valid mobile food unit health license from the city of Manville for an MFU in this section. Section 35-340, some subsections are added to where our special event permit is not required. There are six reasons we have for not having a special event permit. One is an event that's conducted entirely on Alvin ISD property, or the property of a church, or street, city streets are not closed. Before, it referenced just schools, instead as specific to Alvin ISD. Two, property owned and controlled by the city, subject to a contract lease or management/operating agreement with a private party, where the agreement addresses events on the property, or the event is included within the permitted uses in the agreement. Three, processions of vehicles operating in compliance with ordinary traffic laws, or procession of pedestrians along or upon public sidewalks, public parks, or private property. Four, events held for national night out. Five, First Amendment activity conducted entirely on sidewalks and public parks on private property. Or, six, events conducted under the supervision of, or with the permission of a governmental entity on property owned, leased, or operated by a governmental entity other than the city. If the event does not require the closing or rerouting of a public street, the entity employs certified peace officers to provide security for the event, and the entity adopts and provides to the city a written plan addressing emergency services, crowd, traffic, and parking control. There was a seven that was added in under this subsection that speaks about supplementary city permits and inspections that may be required for any sort of amenities or auxiliary structures that would be at a special event. This was put in because we wanted to inform the public that if you fit the criteria in this subsection that says you, a special event permit is not required, it doesn't necessarily preclude you that we don't need a permit, let's say, for a temporary food vendor, a tent that's over a 10 by 10 size, those sorts of things. From last time, we had something about here with unique displays. Sometimes we have certain things where there may be fire that is involved, items hanging from a crane in the air, or there could be some drone shows, or possibly fireworks shows. And we said, okay, well, if a special permit is not, a special event permit is not required, we would still like the opportunity to inspect that, not a permit and inspection and getting that notification, and just making sure that everything is, is okay on that. Let's see. And then, I'm talking about notification for Manville Volunteer Fire Department and Brazoria County Emergency Services District Number Three, that they know those things prior, prior to that. Then section 35-341, the event times were changed from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., which was, I believe, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. before, and that was at the request of council previously. Also in section 35-341, that the location is being at least 300 yards from a restaurant's front entrance, except when you have express written consent from the restaurant owner. The addition of notifying emergency services in the event that we do require a special event permit, that you are notifying, notifying Manville Volunteer Fire Department and Brazoria County ESD Number Three, and doing that during the application process. Section 35-342 took a type B special event from a minimum of 15, I think 30 to 15 days to 15 days, and a type C recurring event went from, I think, a minimum of 10 to seven days down to seven days, and those are, those are calendar days. And then the last item that we have here before you is talking about rain day events. So if you have an event that, let's say, is not rain or shine, we'd ask that you would put on that application for the special event, an alternative date and time. That way, if you had inclement weather for your event, you would have another date that you would be able to do that special event, and it would still be approved for that date, and we wouldn't ask you for any additional costs associated with that. I think that concludes the changes that were made for the ordinance.
Well, thank you, Jessica, for that overview. Do I have any comments and questions from council? Well, I have a few while I let you guys, you have a question? Okay, please, go ahead.
Trying to look on the ordinance to see if it's on here, but I don't see it. So just, I'll say it first. What if we were to have like a big music festival? I know I've seen on the news, certain festivals that happen, and some where the crowd gets out of control, people get stamp, stampeded on, and some of, sometimes the lifted stages, where in this does it show that they have to get the permit for obviously the occupancy, and then also to make sure that the integrity of that stage is safe?
I might defer this one to our Fire Marshal, and if that would be something that would be considered a unique display or not for safety.
First of all, good evening, Mayor, members of council. So when we're talking about these different types of structures, not only would the Fire Marshal's office be needing information about those structures, but also our Building Department would need those as well. So we already do have within the ordinance and also within our application that certain structures might need not only an inspection by the Fire Marshal's office, but also by the Building Department. So in regards to your question about structural integrity of the stage, that would be one of the components that the Building Department would be working with us on. When you're talking about how a particular event is put on, under the fire code, the event organizers are supposed to be submitting paperwork that talks about their action plans, emergency action plans related to any type of emergency incidents that could occur during the event. So those event organizers are supposed to be using their safety personnel to be able to draft that up and provide that to us, so that we have that on file, as well as the event organizers have that. And then if the event that large usually would have onsite security, and they usually were going to be probably bringing in first aid tents as well, to help out with those that are there for that particular festival or event.
So Joe, just to confirm, that's contained already within the process? So, because when these big events come in, they're, they know what they're doing. If there's loopholes, or there's things that aren't called out, they'll catch it. So I just want to make sure our Ts are crossed and Is are dotted there.
So yes, last year, when we had this first brought to us by the previous council, it was around this time, and we started working on that. Those were things that we put in there to allow that. And then in addition, under fire code, under 403 and 404, there is a lot of specific information that's required. I put together a summarized list of that, and that's available within the special events packet, that is available on the website and available for anybody who's filling out the special events. We also put together a questionnaire, that's about three pages, that covers a lot of those things, like if your event is having this, if you say yes, then these are the additional things that are required.
I appreciate that. I think overall, this is a step in the right direction. I, I think this is going to make things easier, considering that overwhelming majority of the event permits that were pulled over the last year have been now for events that would technically be exempted according to this ordinance. So that's a great thing. After the holidays, I am going to want us to revisit this, because I want to get this in place before the holidays happen, but I researched thoroughly the cities of Georgetown, Katy, League City, Alvin, Pearland, you know, Sugar Land, and others, and Tomball, just to see how they have it structured. How do they have their ordinances structured? And the few things that different cities have considered that aren't considered in ours is an event that is small in nature, but is not reoccurring. So we have medium in nature, and then we have small, but reoccurring. We don't have something that's small that's not reoccurring. Events held on private property that's not open to the public, that would not provide, require any public resources. Quite a few cities account for that. So if I want to have a wedding in my backyard, technically that's an event, I would have to go through and apply for a type B permit, even though it's my private property, even though it's not going to block any streets, I would have to go through and do that. Also, expected response times and processing protocol for staff, having that codified, just because that's been a point of contention in the past, and I've seen other cities that have codified the requirements and expectations of the internal team as they go throughout that process. But one of the things that we talked about two weeks ago was ways that we can make specifically the permitting process simple. Have there been any thoughts by, by the team here at City Hall as to ways that we can go about doing that, such as possibly splitting out permits based off of the event type, having a simplified checklist to determine which event would qualify? You know, upon passage of this tonight, what are we ready to deploy to make it simpler? Just as an example, there was a community in Manville that wanted to do a movie night event at a local business. When they learned that they would have to get an events permit, and they found out that it was a 10-page packet, they got scared, because they had never done it before. So they said, you know what? Just, we don't want to deal with the city, and that's just, it's just too much for us. That's the last thing I think that, that any of us want to hear, to be intimidated by a 10-page packet. So we talked about this at the last meeting, kind of want to hear thoughts, you know, things that have been discussed of ways to simplify it, and hopefully also help staff in the process.
I can, I can speak to what we, what we currently have. We have a special event application packet that has a lot of good information in here. It even provides some of the permits that may be needed if you are having a special event, some of those ones that we talked about, the ancillary things such as your temporary health permit, even if you needed signs, which may not be completely applicable anymore. Anything having to do with fire protection, we've, we've put it, we've put it all in, in this packet. The other thing that typically sort of gets ignored whenever we're talking about special events, we have a special event questionnaire, and it'll ask you certain questions if you're having tents or canopies. And if you say yes or no, it'll, it'll tell you what you need to do if you're having a bounce house, if your organization is serving alcohol. If it's a trade show, or if you're going to have a concert, bicycle, run, walk, car, boat, or RV show, closing streets, any sort of entertainment to where you would have structures or bleachers, or maybe a stage. It basically, it's three pages, and it gives you that information. Maybe it's not being highlighted well enough on our page, but it does give you a good snapshot on what, what it is that you, you need to do. I realize that the special event application, it's, it's 10 pages. It starts off on, on the front of it, where it asks you what type of event you're having. And from there, once you check that off, you just sort of go section by section. Will you have signs? Yes or no? Would you have a bounce house, or maybe that sort of thing? Yes or no? And if you're answering no to a lot of these things, and some of the events that we have aren't really that elaborate, they're having food trucks and maybe some vendors, that would be the only two sections that are applicable. Staff took it from a point of view of having the application, it was, it was a one-stop-shop. Check off with type of event you're having, and then from there, you could work through the application. And then if you had to delve into a specific section, like say you were having a large music festival, well, then that's going to require extra sanitary facilities. So from there, you would delve in a little bit more into that section. But a movie night, maybe with a homeowners association where they have restroom facilities onsite, that's a non-applicable, and they would move on from it and not have to do anything with it. So that was the intent behind the application, was to be a one-stop-shop application, because any event can have any of those things, so it expands and it contracts. It's the types of event, and then expands and contracts based off of what you have. We don't want to make an assumption that if you have a type C recurring event, that you might not have one of those, those things, those items in it. You, you may have a bounce house on a type C recurring event, you may have a stage with some live music. So it is a, we're going to capture everything with that, so if that makes any sense. And I think Joe can help explain that a little bit more, if you need to. He was heavily involved in the special events ordinance before, and he's on the ground with the special events, so he can give you a lot of that firsthand knowledge with it.
So to kind of expand on what Jessica said, we were trying to look at a way that we could have the one application that would be able to flow for the three types of events that we were putting in within our ordinance. And some of those you would check off, if that's the one you were doing, as she was saying, depending on the amenities or what you were providing at your event, would be right there on that one application. We didn't want to have it to where they were having to go through multiple sections within our webpage to be able to find the application that they felt might be applicable, having the one application to look at, and then the very beginning where it started. One of the other things that we created is, in support of this, is we actually created almost like our design criteria manual that we have in regards to development within the city, we actually put together a packet that will take each of those sections and expand a little bit more, and give a little bit better explanation of what's required within there, other than just the few basic lines we have in the application. So there is more supporting documents that are in there that has been put in. And after this got approved back in March, when it became available, we did have an informational session with the community, and several organizations came out to go through that. We put together a PowerPoint, and then after that, we actually went page by page in the application, and stayed for as long as anybody had questions related to that, and worked with them while we were here in council chambers doing that, right after it was approved, and right before it was going to be released. Different churches were here, some of the private businesses were here as well. The feedback we received from that was very positive, and they appreciated the fact of us taking the time and actually going through that. But our intent, we knew when we originally created something that we never had as an ordinance, to this being our first one out there, we knew that we would be coming back over time continually revising it and looking at it, depending upon how the city was growing and the different types of events that were coming in. Ie, like you're saying, if it's a smaller event, but it's not at the less than 1,000, but say maybe it's less than 500, we can look at maybe creating a type B1 and a B2, for example. So we can change those up a little bit, but it's all based upon as this event grows, based upon special events, wanting to have it here in Manville.
I appreciate that, Joe, and I heard great feedback about the informational session as, as well. And I think that was, whoever came up with the idea, the team that came up with the idea, I think that was, I think that was great, because there was a lot of good feedback. There's a few things that I, that I heard that you guys mentioned that I think are important to note. I, I've gone through the events permit process myself. It's, I consider myself a decently bright individual. It's a lot. It's, if I've never done an event before, and I want to do something, shoot, I want to hold a wedding in my backyard, I've got to get an events permit. And when I see a 10-page packet, it's, it's a lot. When I see that I have to do a site plan, my mind instantly goes, I have to have this, as I've talked about, this very serious document. The direct feedback that I've heard from, heard from people, not just this homeowners association, but others, is that the 10-page packet is intimidating. And so I appreciate us talking about what we're currently doing, but I want to hear what we're going to do based off of the feedback that we've had. I want us to have some forward-thinking ideas about ways that we can improve the process, not just what we're, not just what we're currently doing. And I think there's some great ideas out there. You know, Jessica, you mentioned that the checklist is being ignored. How, how can we make sure that that's not ignored? Because it's, you guys put effort into that, I think it's very valuable. As I looked at these other cities, the longest packet that I saw was six pages. I saw one city, the city of Georgetown, had an informational guide, a guide that was 24 pages, but their actual application was relatively short. So I mean, an idea is you take that three-page checklist, you have that be the initial submittal, what are you doing? And then there's some follow-ups. I mean, we're also in the 21st century, so maybe we get this online instead of a piece of paper as well. But I think the important thing is, not just from one, not just from two, from three, from quite a few people, there's a desire to see, which I think the events policy is good overall, but there's a desire to see that process improved, to support staff, but also support community at the same time. So I know, Dan, you're unmuted, you have a few things?
Yeah, I was just going to mention, so Jessica and I were talking, that this might be the, the first one that we run through, the Camino software. I mean, that's exactly what it's set up for, so that you can do it online. And what I noticed on these special event permits that come across my desk, a good portion of the sections are NA, you know, NA, NA, that doesn't apply, doesn't apply, doesn't apply. So by going through the checklist, or the dropdowns essentially, whenever they're completing it, if it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply. So maybe it's a one-page or a two-page, right? So I think this dovetails perfectly into that, to that software that, that council approved us getting.
That's great. I love that. What, when do we think, and I'm not going to hold you to this, but kind of where are we at on the Camino software? Where do we think, when do we think that might be up and ready to start?
We have engaged them, and they're, they're populating everything right now, right? Yeah. Yep, in November, we're doing the actual kickoff with them to, you know, go through all of the different things that we've got, because we've got a lot of different ordinances that they need to understand and everything, right? So, but that would, I want to say, was it 30 days, 60 days? That's what they said, they didn't need very long to actually populate it. So it's going to be right after the first of the year that we'll, you know, should have our first permit that we can run through, and I think this is a, this is a perfect one for it, because this can be a one, literally, one, it could be 10 pages, depending on, you know, if it's a type A event, it could be 10 pages, and you need all those, because you've got streets closed, and you've got, you know, everybody, the National Guard, for goodness sakes, you've got everybody, right? If it's an air show, right? It could need all 10 pages, but it's a wedding, maybe it's two pages, one page, so.
Absolutely. Well, no, I'm glad to hear that. If you guys can just please keep us updated in that process, include that regularly, that would be great. And another area that I'll throw out there as an idea is, especially going into the holiday season, there might be more permits that are pulled. If we have our permits department kind of, you know, do a little bit of hand-holding for anybody that might come in and say, and ask, hey, is this your first time ever pulling an events permit? And Dan, you mentioned this, and if they say yes, let's give them a little bit of extra love and attention, let's give them that, that Disney World experience, that above and beyond experience, that they leave and they're like, wow, this is, this is a magical kingdom that we're in. But I'll stop being cheesy now. So I'm good. Anybody, any other comments, questions? Councilwoman Sarmiento?
You led up to that, basically, when I, I logged in right now, because to his point and to your point, I see that you guys did condense it, and I remember when the notices were out, and there was a big And I remember when the notices were out and there was a big special meetings, public town hall on that, which was phenomenal. It was a first step in the right direction to create, make it easier. However, I do agree with him. I think just making it intuitive helps. I'm looking, I was looking a minute ago at the 10-page thing here and it is a little cumbersome. You have to print it, you have to fill it out, and you got to email it or fax it, or is there?
I think we realized before, after last meeting, we made a slight change to it. It was fillable, that you could just do it and save it. And we realized since then that it, it wasn't.
Yeah. So, so that already is another step that's, I hate when I get papers that have to print and then fax and then scan. It's just, it's a cluster. And then the other thing is when you do look on here, and I don't know if it's because I need my glasses, but it is like the never-ending tab. It was a little difficult to find, but also the, the links are so small and there is a lot of information, but it can feel so overwhelming. I'm just looking at it now, which is what you said you already did, Dan, right? So just my, what I wanted to say is this, just like we spoke about earlier, I think that when we create systems and processes, it's probably a really good practice to take yourself through it, to see what are they going to experience? Because we might drop the ball and say, you know what? Maybe we did forget something in there. But also what, what if I was just a stay-at-home mom and I'm partnering with the church and I want to have this and I volunteered? I don't know anything about events. And so that's why I'm just a big proponent of, of us, you know, going through the system ourselves anytime we create new processes or procedures, so that we can be sympathetic to the people. And also, like you said earlier, self-preservation, make it easier on you when they do turn it in and just for efficiency purposes. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Well, and that brings up a great question. So I know, you know, Councilwoman Sarmiento, you mentioned churches. Churches won't, won't have to apply for an events permit unless they have some of those special, you know, conditions, some, some special things that are happening. But at that point, it's not necessarily where they have to pull permit, but it's that they might have to get an inspection done to make sure that it's safe according to, you know, if it's a food truck for health or a stage for, for fire. But I know at the last meeting, we had talked about possibly instead of church, having it be 501(c)(3). Where did, where did we land on that? Cause it looks like it was left at specifically churches, just to bring that full. I believe, I know why. I think Councilwoman Sarmiento spoke to it, but I wanted to bring that full circle.
I think, I think we talked ourselves out of it. Quite frankly, yeah. It just opens it up too much, what we're afraid of. Cause each, yeah, each one of us could have a 501(c)(3) situation and yeah. We purposely did not add it. Hopefully council isn't agreeing with that.
I'm good with that. Appreciate that. Any other comments, questions from council? Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Do I have a second? We have a second. So we have a motion and a second. Motion from Councilwoman Sarmiento, second from Councilman Oplager. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Agenda item number 10, consideration of possible action to direct staff on engaging with the school district to add a pedestrian walking area from the high school to weekly shaved ice. So I'll, I'll introduce this item, then I'll have to step out for one minute. This is something that I've heard from many junior high parents, many high school parents, that after school especially, because parents park in the weekly shaved ice business area or because students are going there to, to eat, they are darting in front of school buses, behind school buses, in front of cars, behind cars. I've seen it. And since I've been asked about it quite, quite a few times, I wanted to just bring it forward. I know the chief has done some, some research into one, crossing walks, but I think this dovetails into what Ms. Abby brought up earlier, which is the conversations about sidewalks. And I know Councilwoman Sarmiento, it's important to you as well, safe passage for students to and from school. But I did have a member from the community of Meridiana reach out as well about a location in their neighborhood about a crossing walk too. So I think it was very perfect, perfect timing, just to kind of get an overview as to what would need to be involved to secure, to secure safe passage for students and for our community in, in general. So Dan, I'll turn it over to you first and I'll step out for one moment.
Sure. I'll just say, Mayor, that we, we have reached out to Alvin ISD to, to talk about this, this specific topic here, which is the pedestrian walking area from the high school over to weekly shaved ice. They are aware of the concerns, just like we are. We just need to get a date on the calendar to sit down with them and kind of work through the traps. Chief and I are, you know, going through the manual on uniform traffic control, control devices. We just want to make sure that it's, that it's, if it's done, that it's done correctly and safely and everything. We don't want to inadvertently create an unsafe situation, of course, right? It would be much easier if, if there was a, a street intersection right there already, you know, like, like Lewis or Large, but those are, we could put them, we could put crosswalks over there, but kids aren't going to walk all the way up there and then back down, of course, right? So the, the logical spot is, you know, right there by the driveway, there's, there's already an area that's painted off, blocked off and everything right now that we did maybe a year or so ago when we blocked off because people were parking and blocking the intersection. So there's a spot right there that would make sense. We just, we need to run the traps on it to, to make sure that it's, it's legal, safe and, and, you know, possible. So I'll, I'll keep you posted on it after we meet with Alvin ISD and probably Alvin ISD PD as well. Just we're, you know, get us all together in the same room to discuss it. Chief, did you have anything to add to that? Other than you don't want to do it?
Well, when you start looking at crosswalks, you know, okay, I, I understand we have parents that are parking over weekly shaved ice, but that's not an authorized pickup and drop-off point for the school. That's just convenience. Uh, when you start looking to putting crosswalks in the middle of the roadway, the manual on traffic control specifically says crosswalk line should not be used indiscriminately. An engineering study should be performed before a marked crosswalk is installed at a location away from a traffic control signal or an approach controlled by a stopper yield sign. Engineering study should consider the number of lanes, presence of median, the distance of the adjacent signalized intersections, pedestrian volumes and delays, the average daily traffic and so on and so forth. It, it, it goes into a lot of things for the engineering study. The, the other thing that, that concerns me is when you go back and look at, you know, the transportation code, you have Title VII vehicles in traffic. Traffic signs, signals and markings, 544.001 specifically states that cities, the state and the city adopts the, it, it says the Texas Transportation Commission shall adopt the manual specifications for the uniformed system of traffic control devices consistent with this chapter that correlates with to and the extent possible forms the system approved by the American Association State Highway and Transportation officials. And then it goes further, 544.002, which says placing and maintaining a traffic control device which a crosswalk is a traffic control device. To implement this title, the Texas Department of Transportation may place and maintain a traffic control device on state highways provided by the manual specifications adopted under Section 544.001. Texas Department of Transportation may provide placement of maintenance under the device under 220.002. Section B and C of this chapter actually goes into implementation for the local authorities, subsections, local authority may not place or maintain a traffic control device on a highway under jurisdiction of transportation, Department of Transportation, which basically, that's where we ran into the issue during the ice storm, when all the lights went out, everybody wanted to put stop signs at the intersections. Well, we did that and we got chastised by Tech Dot because we pulled a traffic control device on their public, on their roadway, so we couldn't do that. So basically when we started looking at implementing a crosswalk in an area that's really not designated as crosswalk or away from a stop sign or a traffic control device, it, it, it creates more issues and more problems. Over my 40 years of doing this business, I've seen people hitting crosswalks because why? They think a crosswalk is their protection. They think they step out in there, the cars are going to stop. Cars don't stop. You're going to have kids walking across the road with their earbuds in, with their cell phones in their hands, not paying attention. I got a crosswalk on across the road. The first time one of them gets hit, the first thing that's going to be said is where's the crossing guard? So who's going to be in charge of the crossing guard? Who's going to put the crossing guard out there? Is the school going to do it or is the city going to do it? You're putting a school zone or a crossing, a crosswalk in an active school zone. Who's, who's going to put the, it, it throws up the question, who's going to put the crossing guard up there? So when we started looking at this, there's options out there. Now granted, it is not across the street from Weekly's. You have two intersections, like, like Dan said, where we have one area where we already have marked off because they're blocking the road. But then you have Large Avenue, and this is something that I sent out, you have Lart, not Large, I'm sorry, Lewis Lane, where kids already, kids are not good, where students already cross to go down to the JB Hensler. They are, they're already walking that road, they're already walking that road to go home. It's a, with no sidewalks. It's a perfect spot to put a crosswalk with a three-way stop sign. I believe, it's my opinion that we can justify a three-way stop controlled intersection with a crosswalk at that particular location. But then that is going to throw in the sidewalk issue. We'll have to start looking at putting sidewalks. Why we don't have sidewalks in front of our schools? I don't know. I, I know that eventually is going to be a, a, a four-lane road. It's my understanding, I might be wrong. Why we don't have sidewalks? We got one that comes from Lakeland to the junior high and it stops. It just, just does not make sense. So an easier option, this is just my opinion. We can sit down and, and talk to the school district about it. We throw ideas around. I'm all for throwing ideas around. But the easiest right now to look at is to be, to, to do a, a study at that particular intersection to see the feasibility of it. I think we can justify the actions better at a controlled intersection with a three-way stop, crosswalk, but we would have to put sidewalks in to get down to Weekly's if that's what we want to do, or put sidewalks in, or we can just end cap it for future sidewalks. It's, it's really just going to be cost-effective, how, or cost prohibitive, or whatever we're going to do to put that in, but it's certainly a conversation we need to have.
I appreciate that, Chief and, and Dan, that overview. And I want to turn it over to, to Councilwoman Sarmiento as well, because at the TML conference, I believe it was, was it last week or the week before or something like that? Yeah, flies by. Councilwoman Sarmiento had some conversations with representatives from Tech Dot as well, specifically about sidewalks. Can you share with us a little bit about that conversation?
Absolutely. So as you guys heard, Abby Sarmiento, Calvio Sarmiento spoke, that's my daughter. And before I even had the notion of running, as everyone knows, I've said a million times for any type of political position, she and I have had this ongoing conversation because her dream was to ride her bike to EC Mason, third grade. So she said when she gets to middle school, she'll get to do that. And so that conversation came up when she was very young. So trust me, when you have an annoying, not an annoying child, but a very persistent child who also sees the need in the community, I go home to her and she brings these things up to me. What I hear is that it's cumbersome. And it is cumbersome because the job wasn't done right the first time. When we built these schools, I don't know what corners were cut. I don't know because I wasn't here. I don't know who was here. At this point, it doesn't matter. Now we have to take that burden on of correcting that because here's the reality, if one kid does get hit, that's going to be terrible. That's, to me, that cost is, is a non-negotiable, a life, a child, because we weren't responsible enough to do the work and have the meetings and have the conversations and basically put money there. I know that our country sends money many places. There's a way to find it. So to Mayor Dan's point, when we were at TML, I had a wonderful conversation with some Austin representatives of Tech Dot. I've emailed Dan Johnson, he's already working on that. I think you guys are included in that. But what they mentioned to me is that there is millions of unused grant money, dollars out there, available specifically towards pedestrian usage and bicycle usage. That's untapped, it hasn't even been touched. And so whether or not we knew that was there or not, it's there. And I had that conversation. And from my understanding, what they said is that especially if it's in front of a high school where there's students across the street from a 60 mile per hour highway, it would take precedence. All we have to do is start having the conversations. And I know Dan asked me for the contact, I'm going to get that to you. But I definitely think that whatever that looks like, whether we, so I hear you saying if we make Lewis Lane a three-way, three-way crosswalk, well then how do the kids get to Weekly? I think the issue all around is the high school has no sidewalks, period. You've got kids walking from the high school, down the ditches, up to Highway 6, bolting across, some of them going to Meridiana, crossing over the bridge, some of them bolting across to get to Onre's to get food, some of them going through the ditches to get to Blue Water. I, I know everybody sees them, I do. They're out there, that's not safe. So, and the bolting across us, right along, you know, McCoy Drive, even though it's a 20 mile per hour speed limit, kids, kids are kids. And you're right, they've got their earbuds in, so it's up to us to take care of them. We have, that's our responsibility is to make the right choice, so that we're protecting our, our citizens and our children, my children, right? So when I think of what you were saying, creating sidewalks, we do have the issue. We make a three-way stop at, at Lewis Lane and McCoy, but then how do the kids get to Weekly's? There's, there's no sidewalks. There we go, they're back in the ditch, they're walking on the street. It has to be all the way around. And to me, it just breaks my heart hearing they're walking down Lewis Lane to get to JB Hensler. That's insane. I was walking the other day and I almost got ran over. Welcome back, Crystal. Cause you know, I hadn't walked in three weeks since my surgery. But it's not easy. Cars are, cars are bypassing each other, there's only one stop sign there. I mean, it's pretty dangerous. So I, I definitely would love to have the conversation. I would love to be included in the meeting with you guys, if you have it, with Alvin ISD, police or whatever, to look at these options and just, just see what the ideas are. And I trust our engineers, right? We have our engineers here to come up with a, a cost-effective plan and then hit up our Tech Dot and see what fund dollars are there so that we mitigate the expense on us. It's going to be work, it's not going to be easy, but I think it'll be work that's worth it. Thank you.
And I know over the next year, as a part of the, kind of the three-pronged approach, one of the things that we're going to be working on is our thoroughfare plan. So identifying not just for the here and now, but the future, a, a multi-use off-road system, trail system, if you want to refer to it as that, is going to be important. But I think there might be some, you know, safe methods that can be deployed even before that point that I, I expect that, you know, staff is working diligently on. And if you guys can just keep us in the loop and let us know what you need from us on that process. But I appreciate the conversation tonight, just after getting hit up a few different times about this, I, I felt it prudent just to, to bring it forward and one, be transparent about what's involved, the, the, the details and the mechanics behind it, but also what does a path forward look like. Do I have any other comments or questions from, from staff or council about this?
Thank you for bringing it out and thank you guys for working on it.
Agenda item number 11, consideration of possible action to approve Resolution 2023-R-28. Dan or Rosie?
Rosie's got this.
Or Tammy?
This is the resolution to approve the issuance of bonds by SMDA on behalf of the TERS Zone 3 to reimburse our developer. I believe the cap is at 20 million. Yeah, and then we have Joe Morrow here that wants to speak about.
Joe, thank you for being here. And my apologies, I should have maybe bumped this up and, and gotten you home. So my apologies for that. Can you guys kind of give us a little bit of, just a brief history as to why this is coming before us and, and what we're doing tonight?
Certainly. Mayor, members of council, Joe Morrow with Hilltop Securities. Also with me this evening from my office is Benjamin Rovat. He joined us in June. So he is with me tonight to get kind of a baptism in city council meetings. What we have before you, years ago, tax increment reinvestment zone number three was established. Since that time, there's been two municipal utility districts, 56 and 57, that were put in. And the purpose of these three entities were to help and assist in the development of the portion of the Meridiana development in Manville. Now originally, I believe it was a different, name different, Seven Oaks maybe. Now, originally, I believe it was a different, name different, Seven Oaks, maybe. But at this point in time, the developer has put on the ground just over $400 million in value in Manville. That was as of July 1, when we got our appraisal estimate back from Central Appraisal District. So, as part of the development agreement that was entered into at the time, that the development was being considered and undertaken, the city created tax increment reinvestment zone number three. And the city participates in that tax increment zone, and also, the county participates in that tax increment zone. And so, taxes on the value that was created above the base, which the base is the original raw land that was there, everything that's been put on there, taxes on that go into tax increment reinvestment zone number three. And what counts as increment in there from the city's perspective is, there's a, there's a set aside for cost of services for the homes being put up there, and then there's a implementation cost of the plan that South Manville Development Authority, any expenditures that they need to do come out of that increment. And the rest of that increment is available to reimburse the developer, and 40.49% of the county's increment flows into that same fund. You also have the possibility to, that some sales taxes will go in there. That doesn't amount to very much right now, I think it's just under $40,000. But over the course of time, if there's, you know, other commercial entities that come in inside that development, that, too, will flow into and become increment available to pay bonds and/or developer reimbursements. So, that is, what this is, is a developer, a way to reimburse the developer for the infrastructure expenditures, expenditure, streets, roads, wet and dry utilities that they have put in. We are here tonight because you created South Manville Development Authority, and you created tax increment reinvestment zone number three. You control the board of South Manville Development Authority by appointing them. So, because those are entities that have been created by the city, you also give them permission to go forward into the markets and execute the development plan. So, that is what we are here tonight. Because the increment has grown to this amount, they're building a lot of houses out there very fast. If you look, a lot of this has just come in in the last few years, and I would expect it's going to continue. But we base the size of our debt issue, not on our expectation that it will continue, but only what is on the ground right now. So, that's what we have sized a bond issue on. What the resolution that we have before you tonight is asking you to approve a not-to-exceed amount, which basically, we're capping the bond issue that South Manville Development Authority would sell at $20 million, cannot go any higher than that. Currently, we're sizing the issue out at about $17,235,000. Now, there are some things that we're still working through that could make that go higher. But probably, the biggest thing, two biggest things that could make that issue go higher would be, one, that I have it sized right now based on a non-investment grade rating. You, for instance, are AA+. But it's a different credit, it's completely different. So, if we're able to get a credit rating, which I don't know yet, we're still waiting on a little bit of information to come back that will help us make that determination, or if we're able to wrap it with insurance, we might be able to price it then at a AA credit rating, and we'd be similar in pricing to what the city gets, but not at AA+. Even insurance doesn't go as high as your credit rating. So, those are some things that would make it, make the issue go up in size, and that's what we're trying to protect, is our upside potential. We wanna be able to pay the developer off as quickly as we can and shut things down. And that's, honestly, that's probably four or five years from now, when his development is complete, right? That we do the final issue and wrap things up. But the sooner we can make that happen, the better. It will end either at the point in time that he is fully repaid for the agreed-upon improvements, or the completion of the development comes, and there's no more increment being added. So, tonight, we are asking for your permission for the South Manville Development Authority to sell debt in an amount not to exceed $20 million.
Joe, I appreciate that overview, and Benjamin, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight, you're learning from one of the best. Staff, do you have any additional items to add in regards to what Joe stated? He said it perfectly, perfectly. Any comments or questions from council? All right, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-R-28. Do I have a second? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Joe, appreciate it. We will now move on to mayor and council comments. I just wanna celebrate a few work anniversaries that we are celebrating this month. We have James McLean, Van Thala Oak, Patrick Botchard, Jordan Allen, Marcus Richardson, our own Wale, Edgar Ruiz as well. So, thank you for being with the city another year. What I'd like to do is, I know we're going a little late tonight, we've been here for a while already. What I'd like to do is have just a discussion item at our next meeting, Tammy, if we can have that listed on the agenda for those of us who attended TML, just to share a little bit of our takeaways from that. We had myself, Councilman Perry, Councilwoman Sarmiento, and our city secretary, Tammy Bell, attend, and I think we all came away with some valuable nuggets that would be good to share, so we'll just have that as a discussion item. But with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? We have a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously, 5-0.